Reverend Williams to lead us in invocation and please stand and remain standing for a face flag.
Let us pray, O Lord our Lord, Lord of all mankind. We thank thee for our glorious consciousness of your presence in the temporal darkness of human turmoil, towering above the mundane chaos of vanities and transgressions. O Lord, we ask you to be our guide as we engage in the affairs of this city. Bless our mayor and our council, administrative staff, all employees, their families, all citizens, their families, our president of these United States of America, our governor, and all elected and appointed officials, their families, our nation and all nations. We ask this in the name of the Father, of the Son, and of the Blessed Holy Ghost. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A hard-working city clerk, Longitis, she doesn't speak too well, but if she can, would you please call rural courts?
Mayor King?
Here.
Mayor Francis Broadway?
Here.
Councilmember Haddon?
Here.
Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Aco?
Here. Thank you. You did well. We're all here. Minutes of our work session and a regular meeting of December 16th, 2013.
Move to the motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Any comments? Corrections? Conditions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing? Minutes are approved. Public comment period. Anyone who would like to take three minutes to address us about the subject of your choosing, we'd be glad to hear from them. Yes, sir, would you please come forward and give us your name and mailing address?
I'm Rick Sessions of 305 Lewis Place.
Thank you.
I'm in favor of the Parks and Recreational Facilities Bond. I particularly look forward to the development of greenways in the city, which I think would be a great quality of life enhancement to our community and would definitely be utilized. Thus, I support your adoption of the Parks and Recreational Facilities Bond and special referendum, and I look forward, or I hope that the referendum will pass when it's voted on in May. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna get that a little later, but you got it in, and okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? This man, if you would give us your name and mailing address.
If she's gonna talk about the bond, you need to do it, but she might wanna talk about the bond, you might wanna tell her to do it.
Is that what you wanna talk about?
Oh, yeah.
Same thing?
Yes.
We will give you an opportunity to do that.
Later on.
Yes. Is there anyone who would like to speak about anything other than the bond? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we have presentations, and our city manager that have some words you'd like to say?
Mayor, Council, I would. I would like to at least give some comments about our recent snowstorm and our staff's response, and, you know, as you know, for many in the community, the sleet and snow last week was a reason to stay home, and as the storm came in Tuesday afternoon and Tuesday evening, most people wanted to get home, and we thanked them for doing that and staying home Wednesday. They did a good job staying home, at least through Wednesday afternoon or evening, but many of our employees were not given that option. We needed them to be prepared to respond to the routine calls and to the storm and the event and problems that it created. I talked to employees that were out on Wednesday and Thursday. They were generally in good spirits to be serving the community, and I'm very proud of that. They seemed to enjoy being out there and helping those of us that needed their assistance. Now, I would like to congratulate our staff for their preparation and response, and again, a lot goes into preparing for the storm in all the departments to make sure, one, people can get here and our equipment's ready to respond in response to the sleet and snow that we received last week, and throughout most departments, our staff watched the weather forecast, they made their preparations based on those forecasts, they spoke to counterparts across departments, which I think speaks very well for those to be speaking to other departments and not just within their own, so they help one another through the adverse weather. We did bring in extra firefighters to provide quick response crews, our police patrols related trouble spots throughout the community, our recreation staff provided manpower and equipment to remove snow from sidewalks and parking lots at city facilities and throughout our downtown sidewalks, and again, we had not maybe utilized them in that capacity in previous snowfalls, and our public works worked throughout the night, monitoring the conditions and calling staff to come in early Wednesday morning to begin plowing our city streets, and I would like to ask our public works director to come in and share at least some of what he saw in his first snow event with the city and to recognize a few of our employees who really worked beyond their normal duty hours to clear the streets for us. Jose?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There's a saying that I love that says, "A good leader is one that surrounds themselves by great personnel and is sense enough to stay out their way."
That's exactly right.
And I have two of my supervisors, superintendents here, James Chester's Garage Superintendent, and then Doug Henderson is actually a newly appointed Streets and Storm Supervisor, and these people did phenomenal. I'll start from the initial planning where Doug and the rest of the Streets and Storm Superintendents got together and came up with a game plan. They broke down everything from where we're gonna meet and what we're gonna do, and we divvied out instructions, and then we came up with one or three different scenarios, and we followed the third one, which was, we wait till five o'clock that night, and if the snow real hard, we're gonna start to hit everything there, otherwise, we're gonna go home and come in when we thought it was needed to. Superintendent gave me a call at 7:30, said, "It's sleeting, we're gonna hit the roads right now." So we had seven individuals come in, and then James at one point said, "No, whatever you need, we'll supply it." So he was our support. So we had seven individuals come in, including one mechanic, and they stayed overnight, and they solved the roads, sanded the roads, and then the rest of the crew, another 10 individuals, came in at four o'clock in the morning, and they started plowing at that point. So we hit the roads hard and heavy all through the night and then all day Wednesday, and thanks for the police, thanks for Parks and Rec, and thanks for Fire for helping us out as well, so it was very much a team effort across the city, but I really wanna give credit where credit is due, and the guys, the frontline workers, they did phenomenal, and I think they did just an exceptional job from the beginning till today, when there's nothing, nothing left, but...
Mr. Mayor, I think these gentlemen deserve a round of applause. I must say that.
Either of you would like to make any comments?
I would just like to say publicly to James Chester and his staff, thank you. Without him and his diligence, we couldn't have got done what we got done.
I bet he says the same thing about you. Well, I appreciate that. I brag about our city staff all the time, and this is proof. It's just not words that I'm throwing out. I believe you to be the best staff, city staff, employees, right across the board. I wouldn't trade you for any in the state, and I know most of them throughout the state. Thanks very much. Job well done.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Certainly worked like Atlanta.
Anything else, Scott, right now?
Mayor, that's all for me.
Okay. We will move to a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item B is our public hearing for the $18.9 million bond order, adoption of the 18.9 Parks and Recreation Facility Bonds, and the adoption of the resolution calling a special referendum for the May 6, 2014 election. The purpose of the public hearing tonight is to talk about the 18.9 bond order for the Parks and Recreation Facility Bonds and the financing for these needed improvements. The projects are the construction of WA Foster Recreation Center, construction of the multi-sports facility, improvements and renovations to Herman Park Center in Herman Park, and our Greenway projects. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Goldsboro News/Argus on January the 9th, 2014, for the order authorizing the 18.9 Parks and Recreation Facility Bonds. After the public hearing tonight, it's recommended that City Council approve the order authorizing the 18.9 Parks and Recreation Facility Bonds and adopt the attached resolution calling for the special bond referendum for the May 6, 2014 election for the 18.9 Parks and Recreation Facility Bonds.
Thanks, Kay. Any questions from Council? Thank you. This is a public hearing, as Kay just described. Anyone who would like to speak for or against or to make comments, we'd be glad to hear from you. Would you please come forward and give us your name and mailing address?
Gentlemen, I'm here to speak against the bond issue coming up in May. I tried to keep up all the reading that I've seen in the paper in reference to the bond issue and WA Foster. Every piece of information that I've seen, it had WA Foster on it. Now, at one time, there was funds for WA Foster, so I don't know why WA Foster is always in a package deal, and I do know it's probably in there because you wanted to lump it in and get something else going with it. So if you're concerned about WA Foster, it should have been by itself and used the funds that you already had for it, but I'm against it and about any bond issue, and I'm a singer ahead of house, and I'm not able to pay no more taxes, and if that bond issue passes, the city employees and the residents gonna have to pay more taxes, so I'm not for no bond issue coming up in May, and I will tell everybody that I know to vote against it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? If you'd give us your name and mailing address, please.
Your period. Us. Burke, B-E-R-Y. Burke's, 2606, Pine Leaf Road.
Good evening.
Evening.
I, too, would like to speak against the bond referendum. I'm not opposed to the recreational facilities, I'm just opposed to how we're proposing to pay for it. I think we're doing it all on the backs of the citizens of Goldsboro, and I think there's gonna be some shared benefit with it. I think that if you have a sports complex out beside Seymour Johnson's, I'm totally for it, I'm totally for Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, but I think there will be some other citizens that will reap benefits from Seymour Johnson continuing to be here. I think there's some other citizens, I'm talking Wayne County citizens, that will benefit from having Herman Park upgraded, that type of thing, and I don't see why, you know, the county couldn't participate. I just, I just think it's wrong to put it all on the backs of the citizens of Goldsboro, and I, and I think we may about to reconsider. The other thought, if I read the newspaper article correctly, it said that once they got the bond passed, then they were gonna start looking for other funds and grants, and I thought, well, that's like getting the cart before the horse, why don't we look for some funds and grants before we have a bond referendum for $18 million? So anyway, I've said enough, but I just wanna go on record as, I'm for the recreational facilities, I'm for anything that advances our relationship with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, but I think we're looking at putting it all on the backs of the citizens of Goldsboro, and I don't see why we couldn't spread the expenses with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I first want to say that I'm against increasing taxes concerning the situation with the park. The next thing I would like to say, and giving some thoughts to the park, I've been down here from Kentucky since 1959, and Goldsboro's tennis teams, they have practice facilities at the park like they are now. Okay, to make it short, I feel that as far as we're pinching pennies and concerned about raising more money and things like that, let the responsibility fall on the Board of Education in providing space that's available on the campuses of the city schools and moving them where you won't have, where you can add the additional parking spots and things that I read in the paper concerning that. Put the responsibility, I think the responsibility should be with the Goldsboro City Schools and not clamp the planned enlargement of the park as you are describing here. I would say, again, I'll take this time to, just off record, off base, just a little bit, most of you know that Goldsboro High School is the only school in Wayne County that does not have a vocational curriculum. We are losing generations of young men and women. Last week, Wayne Community College made it in the newspaper, taking into consideration that they are providing vocational courses that would include now age 16, 17, and 18 years old, whereas even the students at Goldsboro High School don't even have that probability. They can't go, 'cause there's no vocational school here, and the leaders, I don't consider myself a leader, I know I'm talking to leaders of the county and city now, that we need to do something about it. We're talking about companies doing things to bring industries here to provide jobs. Until the quality of the educational systems in Wayne County improve tremendously, companies that concerned about locating here in Goldsboro, we'll miss it. They're not gonna come until we straighten up and fly right in the education of our children here in Wayne County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Yes, ma'am.
Well, actually, I support the bond issue for the recreation facilities and for the greenways. I think it'll improve our economic development in Wayne County, it can bring recreation to our area, it can help connect the mountains to the sea trail that will go from Klingman's Dome in the Appalachians to the Outer Banks, come right through here. We're also perfectly situated for the East Coast greenways to come through our area, which can bring some economic development here, more recreation for our county and for Seymour Johnson Air Force Base that are always looking to be in better health, and also for the health of Wayne County. As a dietitian in Wayne County for 30 years, there's a great need with our youth in all walks of life for better health. We're very high in diabetes in this area, stroke, heart attacks, as you've seen in the paper recently, and so I am for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Now is the time.
Rick Sessions, 305 Lewis Place. I would just reiterate my support for the Parks and Recreation Facility Bond and refer the committee to my earlier comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Speaking against the bond referendum that's about to be, for the people of Goldsboro, they're not really in the area that you're talking about putting the WA Foster there. Strongly disapprove of having that in their area, and it would suggest back to me again that why don't we keep it over in the area there, buy up the property that's connected to where the concern is, there are three houses off Lesser Street that's behind there, the building that's facing Beale Street with the bar, the bar beautician places at, and the old tar cleaner area, that'll be enough to accommodate the WA Foster. And what I'm looking at in the paper there is saying that the thing that you're speaking of is not concrete, not written to say that that's really gonna happen, and we still don't know whether it may happen. If there are money to be spent, where would the first project take place at? Is spending this money, would it be at the park or would it be at WA Foster, for putting this building up or re-renovating it? Now, it's saying that we spend some, close to $3 to $6 million there, it still doesn't hold in the water there, but we're looking at, they're talking about the greenway, which probably exceed the cost of what we're talking about altogether, and some of the places that we're speaking of about doing would not compensate for that type of money there, then you're saying that we don't know whether or not you have an open finance to where you may go back and borrow some more money if it get approved without permission, saying that, okay, you voted on, it passed, now we can go back there, if we need $80 million there, we can go and get it. It's on the citizen, and we end up paying it, and would probably be readjusted again there, 'cause I'm paying $1,000 already, and you're talking adding 3% to my property, and the other folks that got double or triple property, that there go, then the 3% added back to there, then some of them may have to sell the house just to make things great, and a lot of citizens, they can't, they just can't see that, and I know I can't see it. Now, it's not like, hey, I get anywhere like $40,000 to $200,000 a year for anything to compensate what you want. Now, we don't know where it is, if there's grant money that you need to go and ask for first, I say ask for the grant money, but this $19 million that you're trying to set for the citizen, it's not gonna work. We just don't see it. So we're strongly against it there, if the park hit, if the WA Foster is being used to get the money, then we definitely do not want it. Now, Goldsboro High School, it ain't done popped up, why use it where it's totally black populated area there for the school than WA Foster? I think it's a bad scene.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
We're talking about $18.9 million for buildings and stuff. We haven't talked about anything about staffing. I just like to know where that money would come from, would that be a tax increase down the road? And I'm pretty sure I probably heard that in the, when y'all did your presentation, but that's what I was worried about, if that was gonna be another tax increase down the road.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to, yes, sir?
This is a new issue with me, I'm out in the county, so I was hearing about this. Thinking about one thing, I'm worried about the bypass around Goldsboro. What's gonna be effect on the business taxes when you're gonna collect less taxes from your business people if all these people, some people bypass around the city? Will there be enough revenue from these lost, these lost sales to cover this increase in taxes? If you put the tax increase in, will the residents have to pay more because there'll be less business taxes coming in? The reason I mention that, I've talked to a few businessmen, and they're kind of concerned what will happen to their business if that bypass takes people around the city instead of coming through, just something to think about.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No way? Wanna give everyone a chance to speak, I guess everyone who, we're close to public hearing, and we do have a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we adopt the $18.9 million on Parks and Recreation Facility Bond and also adopt a resolution calling for a special referendum for May 6, 2014.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposing? Motion carries. Moving right along to our consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, your consent agenda consists of items C through item P. Again, you removed item G, I, and K to action items, so again, consent agenda is C through P with items G, I, and K moving to the action agenda.
Okay. We have a motion?
Move to the dock.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion before we have a rule call vote? Hearing none, rule call vote, please.
Mayor King?
Yes.
Mayor Francis Broadway?
Yes.
Councilmember Haddon?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Goodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Aco?
Yes. Thank you. Consent agenda is approved. Items requiring individual action?
Mayor, an action item, we had item Q, which was adoption of the conceptual master plans, with the council had deferred action on, so we have removed that item, so item Q is not on the action agenda. We do have item, I guess G is your first item on the action agenda, and Jimmy could speak to that if you'd like him to.
Item G, sign modification, North Cloud Stop and Center. Sub property located on the west side of Spence Avenue between Royal Avenue and US Highway 70 East, and is crossed from Spence Avenue from Walmart. They want to install a 200 square foot signs. Plan Commission at that meeting held on January 27, 2014, recommended approval of the modification of the 500 feet of linear street front required for two feet standing signs. They did not approve the modification, which would allow additional 200 square foot sign. If another sign is installed, it will be limited to 100 square feet in the area. The recommendation is by motion or settlement of the Plan Commission and approve the modification of the 500 feet linear feet of street front required for two feet standing signs.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we go against the Plan Commission and offer sign for sign, because I think that's fair to the other businesses and these things, and if they wanna put a new sign up, they can take the old sign down.
I second that, ma'am.
We have a second. Any further discussion before we call for a vote? Hearing none, all in favor of the, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Hearing.
Item I, site and landscape plans, Wayne County Public Schools, addition of a modular unit. The property located on the east side of Jefferson Avenue between Peachtree Street and Rose Street. The Wayne County Public School Board has proposed a placement of a 11,500 to 830 square foot of modular building. No additional staff would be added as a result of the additional classrooms. 31 parking spaces are required, 25 parking spaces are stolen. The recommendation is by motion or settlement of the Plan Commission and approve the site and landscape plans for the modular unit with the modification required parking from 31 spaces to 25 spaces.
We have a recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we defer this item and let the staff go back to the school board and talk about the aesthetics that we talked about in the location at the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposing? Motion is carried.
Item K, alley closing, holding alley, running from West Crew Street.
Yeah.
Make a motion. Councilor Haddon, excuse himself.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Michael is excused.
Alley closing, holding alley, running from West Crew Street to West Chestnut Street, between South Carolina Street and South Virginia Street. The petition for closing runs a distance of approximately 433 feet and has a right-of-way width of 20 feet. At a public hearing held on January 21st, 2014, no one spoke or appeared to speak either for or against this petition. The Plan Commission at that meeting held on January 27, 2014, recommended approval The planning commission, at that meeting held on January twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, recommended approval of the alley closure. The recommendation is by motion, accept the recommendation of the planning commission and adopt an order to close this portion of Holden's Alley.
Any questions of Mr. Rowe before we vote? Hearing none. We do have a recommendation.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by CNN. Aye.
Aye.
Hoesing? Motion is carried. I guess that's... That's it?
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Attorney? That's the city manager?
No report this evening.
I saw you about to drink something. I wanted to spill it.
Get me. No report.
Mr. Manager Scott?
No, sir. No report.
Moving right along to this group of fine people here. Michael? I'm sorry. Mayor Protem?
I just, I do want to take this time to commend the employees, our people at Public Works. The phone calls I got were for state roads. Our city roads were done. And two of the phone calls I got was the state, if we had put sand at intersections, that the state should have had them already.
Yeah.
And that was out in a number of areas around Olows. And I was proud of our city people and was also proud of our sanitation guys who got right out there. They didn't miss a beat.
They never do.
So, I just want to put that out. I was proud of...
Thanks. We all are. Michael?
Well, I would echo the same sentiments rather that Mayor Protem is at it. And I do want to mention, we do have a new business downtown that's coming. It's the Yoga Connection. I know the lady who runs the Yoga Connection. And as a matter of fact, this weekend, I started my two hundred hour yoga master training. I've been doing yoga for a lot of years and I'm looking forward to advancing my skills and working with her. And I was very pleased when she informed me that she was establishing a location here in Goldsboro. So, for those of you stiff guys, yoga is the way to go.
Where's it gonna be, Michael?
Which? Grinds.
Okay.
Jeff Grinds. Jeff Grinds, yes, sir.
Okay. William?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank the city employees that had to work through storm and immediately after the storm too, after ice and snow fell. Because we had, didn't miss a beat on picking up trash collections.
Not a bit.
Even though they had to change their schedule and they had to work Friday and Saturday, I believe.
Yes, sir.
But that can be mighty dangerous, riding on the back of the truck, collecting trash with ice and snow on the ground.
Jumping off of trucks.
Well, I'm thinking of a car not being able to stop. But we have some very good employees and I've always loved General Services. They're very sincere workers.
Absolutely. You made a good point. They do it safely. They, if they weren't careful, we could have an awful lot of accidents, but they do it safely. Yeah. Great group of folk. Reverend Charles?
Yes, Mayor. I, you know, resurfacing and working on our streets. I hope that we remember Elm Street and also Harris Street and Bus Drive. The citizens living in the housing development on Harris Street between the fire station and Franklin Street. That's near you, Miss Mary Lee. Well, the people living in those houses, if you're going toward Franklin Street from Southern Street, the ones on the right-hand side, if you have a torrential rain, if they don't ride through that water on their automobiles, they gotta wade through the water to get to their houses. And we need to do something about that, the city manager. Those people shouldn't have to walk through water to get to their houses. And sometimes when it rains, torrential rains, you and Jose might go by and look at it.
We will. Yes, sir.
That it?
That's it. Thank you.
Chuck?
A couple things, Mr. Mayor. I'll piggyback on everyone else and commend our staff on the excellent job they did over the snowstorm. Like Councilmember Goodman, I saw a lot of them out even Saturday, picking up garbage and things like that. But even taking a step further, the DOT, I mean, it was a very good effort throughout, it seemed like. The whole region really did a good job. So, we want to commend them all. And then just want to commend Wayne Community College and I guess the Paramount, Sheri at the Paramount and all. They had the Praxis Film Festival at the Waynesboro House Friday night.
Yeah.
Very well attended, very good deal. I know a lot of us went. And just very impressive thing to have. I hadn't been in the Waynesboro House in years and forgot how nice it really is. It's a unique thing. So, I just want to thank them for that and having it downtown. And it looked like it was a very successful event. And then just lastly, I just, I hate to, I don't want to close without saying this, but I just want to one more time offer our prayers and condolences to his family and Sheriff Kerry Wenders. They don't get any better than Kerry was. Jeff, I know you knew him well and for years, but you can't replace Kerry. He's just a special, unique person. He reached across lines. He got the job done and did it with dignity and pride. He was just a great person and he'll truly be missed in our county. So, I just want to say that.
Absolutely.
That's it.
G?
You know, I always get at the end of the line, so I just have to reiterate what everybody said about General Services because they did do a great job. And our police department and our fire department and all who pitched in and went beyond the call of duty. I'm glad we didn't have any major fires during the nights, on Tuesday night and Wednesday night because I don't see how they could have worked in that kind of conditions. But I'm proud of them. And to comment on one statement that was made during the public hearing, I wish there was a way that the city and the county could work more closely together than what we seem to be working right now. And I think it'd be a benefit to every citizen of Wayne County, of which Goldsboro residents are citizens of Wayne County.
That's it. That it?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say one other thing. I didn't say anything about the police department and they did a tremendous job. Just their presence out there made people slow down and encouraged people to get off the streets.
Good. I would just like to again thank our hardworking employees, all of them, for a job well done. And about Kerry Wenders. Kerry Wenders, most of you don't know this, but Kerry Wenders started his law enforcement career in the Goldsboro Police Department. I was the human resources director and hired Kerry Wenders. So, we've been very close for years. And I remember I was in the police department the day he had told his fellow police officers that he was gonna run for sheriff. And when I walked in, they said, "Guess what? Oh, Kerry's gonna run for sheriff. Can you believe that?" Well, Kerry ran for sheriff and Kerry became the sheriff. And Kerry and I were very close. Every time he'd get ready for the run, he would say, "You know, I don't know about this time, man. I want to run, but I, you know..." I said, "Kerry..." I finally told him, "Kerry, you will decide when you're no longer going to be the sheriff. That's the time you don't run." And that was absolutely correct. Kerry Wenders served this county. I went to an awful lot of events and Kerry was at most of them. He didn't do it at election time. He did it around the club. Twelve years, twelve months out of the year, he was there. We're gonna miss him. And I tell you, that was one heck of a funeral service. I saw more law enforcement people, and rightfully so. They were all over the place. In order for us to get back to Goldsboro, I had to show Chuck and Scott, I grew up in Mount Holly, a back way to beat the crowd. And we didn't run into anybody, did we?
I've never been to Duplin County to get busted.
Okay. If there's nothing else to come before us, we stand to join.